Taz, how do we look? Ready? All right. Well, good evening, everyone. It is 6:01. I would like to call the June 1st, 2021 Edgefield County Council Meeting to order. Appreciate each and every one of you for taking the time to be here tonight. I'm very pleased that Dr. Matt Clark from Pa- uh, the pastor at Foothills Christian Assembly is here to open us up in a word of prayer. Dr. Clark, if you'd be willing to come up to the podium. And if y'all please rise for the prayer.
Almighty and gracious heavenly Father, thank you for sending Jesus into this sad, sin-rumbed world that is so often darkened with a deep sense of despair and hopelessness. Lord, our souls grope for a meaning and hope in this world, and yet the search feels futile to so many around us. Where can we find hope, oh God? Can your grace really overcome our sins and failures? Can your gospel power really make a difference in this world corrupted with our pride, unbelief, and selfishness? We remember the promises of your word this evening as we cling to the great hope that is ours in Jesus Christ. This is a faithful saying worthy of all acceptance, that Christ Jesus came into the world to save sinners. And for you, Lord, are good and ready to forgive and abundant in mercy to all those who call upon you. And whoever calls on the name of the Lord shall be saved. Our Father in heaven, we praise you for saving us from the death and misery that we have earned and for bringing us, by your grace, by the death of the Lord Jesus Christ, into the kingdom of your Son, the kingdom of light, life, peace, joy, power, righteousness, and love. And as your grateful children, we praise you, Lord, for the freedoms that we still enjoy in our county, our state, and our nation. Though we have not remained faithful to you, in your patience and your mercy, you have not entirely turned us over to our sin. Thank you, Lord, for your mercy. Grant that we would receive your mercy with renewed devotion to your glory and your honor and to do your will. Our Father in heaven, our nation is so divided, so polarized. We are all so quick to judge, so slow to listen, so apt to look down upon one another. Oh Lord, forgive us for our pride. In your mercy, Father, grant us humility across our county and here in these chambers that we would listen to one another and look out not only for our own interests, but also for the interests of others. Grant that the power of the gospel of Jesus Christ would be moving mightily through our- throughout our county, that gratitude and praise to you would flow throughout our county, and that the love of God and the love of our neighbors would mark Edgefield County more and more with each passing day until Jesus Christ, the King of kings and the Lord of lords, returns in glory as the victor of history, in whose name we pray.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. If you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Y'all may be seated. So the first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. The motion's been made by Councilman Campbell. Second by Vice Chairman Talbert. Is there any discussion on tonight's agenda? All right, see none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Agenda passes unanimously. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, the approval of, of minutes, and we don't have any minutes tonight, so the minutes from the last couple of meetings will be in our July packet. Um, I'm very pleased to introduce tonight as our guest speaker, Ms. Tillman. Uh, this has been a long time coming. I know, uh, the, the folks that wanted to do the Juneteenth project came to us two years ago, and last year it got postponed, so we're really thrilled that you'd come up to the podium and tell us what's going on as it relates to the Juneteenth program.
Hello, hello, I'm gonna just... Greetings, greetings, County Council. And please excuse me, I'm coming straight from the school today where I'm an administrator, and you know how these days are. Uh, I bring you greetings on behalf of Vision 2020 and Beyond, um, a local nonprofit chapter. I think the last time that I was actually here to talk with you all was when we, uh, were presenting the March for Hope Mega Health and Wellness Festival and received such a good feedback from you all. So we always appreciate the support for our mega festivals. I am coming to you today, uh, to bring you information about the upcoming Juneteenth inaugural mega festival. We know we're coming out of a pandemic, um, at this time, so we are, uh, able to do a, a large festival for the community. Uh, Juneteenth takes place on June 19th, and we are looking forward to, um, over a hundred, uh, participants, vendors, um, wonderful food vendors, retail vendors, gospel artists. We have a opera singer coming to, uh, to present us with some lovely opera music as well as just other parts, um, that day. And I am bringing to you the information. Uh, as I just mentioned, it is a full-day festival from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Uh, our information, information's available on our website as well as, um, on our social media pages. The festival, um, the daytime festival's from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and we kick off with a Saturday morning market, a wonderful opportunity to present fresh fruits, vegetables, produce, uh, local community coming together, just doing market-type activities. And we go into a nice cornhole tournament, so looking forward to, um, to seeing that in action. Then we have our retail vendors, and we have a Taste of Southern Food Festival, some wonderful taste, um, taste restaurants are gonna be there to offer food. And we have a gospel concert, uh, with seven participating, uh, gospel artists, um, some nationally recorded artists as well. We have the encounter with Ms. Cole Pepper, who is a, uh, opera singer, soprano, as well as an activist. And then we have a business showcase. And that night, we have been, um, privileged to have the opportunity to present a pre-Father's Day Juneteenth concert with nationally recorded artists, um, coming in from Baton Rouge, Louisiana by the name of Pokey Bear, as well as some local artists and comedians. Uh, we are excited to have some kid entrepreneurs as well, um, participating and showcasing their products and their services, uh, to the community. So that's a very exciting part. We have had a great response. We've had, uh, plenty of sponsors to join with us. We just wanna make sure the community knows about the event. It is open to all, uh, members of the community. Although we're celebrating Juneteenth, we want to make sure that it, that, uh, we have, um, diversity represented it. And, uh, we just wanna bring awareness to the event. Our theme is, uh, Celebrate Resiliency. We all, I'm sure, have a testimony to that since we're coming out of a pandemic as well as, um, this particular event.
I have a couple of questions, but I'd like to first open it up to council to see if anyone on council might have a question or two. Okay. So, so the two questions that I have.
Mm-hmm.
One, for people who want more information, they can go to vision2020andbeyond.com.
That's correct.
Vision2020andbeyond.com.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
And, uh, tickets are available there as well as pricing.
Tickets are available as well as pricing. Uh, for the festival, it is a $5 donation for the day. And children 12 and under are free.
Okay. And then my second question, I got an education a couple of years ago when Ms. Holloway came. Can, can, for those who may not be aware, can you just explain a little bit of the history of Jun- Juneteenth?
And so, as we know, the Emancipation Proclamation was signed in 1863 uh, for the rebellious states. And, um, in Galveston, Texas, they got news that they were freed on January 19th in 1865, two years later. And we now recognize that across the country as Juneteenth. Um, all but three states celebrate Juneteenth, uh, at this time. There are Hawaii, North Dakota, and South Dakota.
Thank you very much. Any other que- questions?
Other questions?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Tillman.
All right, thank you.
I hope it's a huge success.
We are hoping so too. We are, we are expecting and anticipating a huge success. Thank you. Any more questions?
Thank you.
The location is, I'm sorry, uh, the Landing on Bogus Hill Road, which is off of 25. If you Google the Landing, uh, on Bogus Hill Road, um, it will take you straight to it. So the Landing on Bogus Hill Road, it is Google verified. So if you Google it, it comes up in GPS as well as it comes up on just the regular, um, Google. So the Landing on Bogus Hill Road, Edgefield County. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is comments for the, from the public for items that are on tonight's agenda but are not part of a public hearing. And we do have a few public hearings tonight. Taz, I would just ask if there are, if anyone has signed up to speak about items that are not public hearing items. Thank you so much. Okay, we've got, uh, four individuals. Just take them in order. When you come up, please state your name and address and, um, what the subject that you wanna speak about, and you have five minutes to speak. First individual is Ms. Tanya Guy.
Good evening. Um, I'm Tanya Guy, I'm with the Edgefield County Archives. And, um, first I'd like to say, Council, I really appreciate all the support that you have given the Edgefield County Archives. Um, I can't tell you how much it means to me. Um, since the last budget hearing, I did find another, a few things that, um, I was remiss to mention at that time. And, um, so I think Taz graciously put these items in your packets. Um, but for just a moment, I'd like to tell you a little bit about what I'm wanting. Um, so I'm looking at some oversized folders and some oversized Mylar sleeves that will help conserve some of our oversized documents. And I brought some from the Tompkins Library. These were items that had already been conserved when they were donated. So this gives you an idea of what I'm looking for. So I'm looking for folders like this that will encapsulate documents like this. This is a, um, a, a Bonds from 1871. And so what this does is, we can encapsulate it in the Mylar, put the acid-free tape around it, and then it protects it from light and air and from fingerprints getting on it. And so it, it keeps it from deteriorating. Um, so we have some very large plaits in the archives, some dating back to the 1760s, um, pre-Edgefield. And so, um, I need to get some of these items if, um, with your support, uh, for the archives. Another thing that I was looking at is an overhead scanner. Um, an overhead scanner will allow me to open up some of our really large books, and I'll be able to take photographs of them, digital photographs. So instead of having to wrestle with the books and throw them up on the copy machine, doing damage to the books and to the person handling the books, we can lay them flat and then take digital photographs. And that will save the books from damage. And then some of our books are really, really fragile, and even to handle them, they start to flake and fall apart. So this would allow us to photograph entire books, and then when people come in and need copies from them, we'll already have a digital copy and won't even allow the public to touch them. So they'll, can, it can stay in conservation in the vault. Um, so, and I'm, I'm more than willing to allow other departments to borrow this equipment, like the Clerk of Courts Office or whoever might need it. And, um, the items that I'm requesting are, um, right under $1,000. So anyway, I just would, um, appreciate any support the council will be able to, to grant me at this time.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council?
So how much would that first, that package, that's laminated?
Yes, ma'am.
So how much would one cost?
Um, they come in, these, they come in a package of, um, of four for $81. And then the, that's for the, the cardboard. And then the, the Mylar, um, you get, um, a pack of 50 this size for $84. And then the scanner that I'm looking at is 389. And it does 24 megapixels, so it does a very high resolution and give us a really good scan of, of our documents.
To clarify, you're asking for an additional $1,000 for your office supply budget?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay.
I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. The next in- individual that is, uh, signed up to speak is Ms. Linda Anderson, and she wants to speak about the comprehensive plan revision. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, I'm Linda Anderson, um, and I'm here to speak about the comprehensive plan revision. Um, I'm gonna read this. Tonight, the third reading for the comprehensive plan revision is under consideration. Also noted on the agenda, the Planning Commission recommends revising the comprehensive plan, use and transportation plan to the original wording that was in place prior to the June 2019 change. I've, uh, given you a copy of the minutes to that, uh, June 4th, 2019 meeting, just to refresh everybody's memory. The change included removing the densities wording from the future land use map, which corresponds with the densities in the text. I've also given you a copy of that. These were supposed to be the only thing that was removed. The legends on maps are an important aspect for citizens, planners, and developers. It is a key used to show what it represents on a map. These are the issues we have been petitioning to have replaced. These changes have proven to have unintended consequences. Case in point, one of the issues that you have tonight will be dealing with, uh, lot sizes. Dense these were removed on three categories, categories, all residential. Estate residential, suburban res- density residential, and village density residential. According to Mr. Ford, the consultant, suburban residential would be the most utilized for developments. The Planning Commission also stated in their recent meeting that the comprehensive plan and the LMO are both flawed. And with the council's May meeting directive to continue working, it is unknown where the final result will be. It's the belief of a large portion of citizens that the original plan submitted by the Planning Commission to County Council in March 2019 was the closest and had the both support of those commission members and the citizens who actively provided input throughout that lengthy process. We believe that should be a starting point for the current planning commission and respectfully submit a request that it be returned to that original comprehensive plan, including the densities on the map. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next individual that's signed up to speak is Ms. Marion Bland. And I believe this is an item that is not on our agenda for tonight. So I'm gonna ask that you speak at our second public comment section, okay? Just 'cause it, that's what that section is for. But we're glad that you're here. All right. The next item on the agenda tonight, uh, that's all for the comments from the public for items that are on the agenda, is our reports. I would ask if there are any comments on our departmental reports. All right, see none. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. And there's only one item, that is consideration of reappointment to the Edgefield County Hospital Board of Trustees of Mr. William Dalzell. I would entertain a motion to approve Mr. William Dalzell to the hospital board. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Ireland. Seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Is there any discussion? All right, see none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, that passes unanimously. All right, we do have several, um... I think it's okay. We'll just keep moving. We do have several public hearings this evening. And, um, I would just like to say upfront that the, the issue, Project Light, deals with, um, the expansion of broadband, uh, which is being done by Electric, Aiken Electric Co-op. And so the first public hearing that we have, and I'll just read this, is consideration of approval of public hearing of ordinance number 2021788, an ordinance authorizing execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by and between Edgefield County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county as Project Light and its subsidiary, acting for itself, one or more of these affiliates and/or other project sponsors. Collectively, the company pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county, the project, the benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the company and the project, certain special resource revenue credits in connection with the project, and other matters relating thereto. I would ask if there are any citizens here that would like to speak about on that public hearing issue. See none. I will read the second one, we'll move on to the second one. And this is for one that is, uh, in conjunction with Aiken County. I'll just read it. Consideration of approval of public hearing ordinance number 2021786, an ordinance authorizing the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial business park in conjunction with Aiken County, such industrial business park to be geographically located in Aiken County and established pursuant to Section 41170 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, seven, 1976, as amended, to provide for a written agreement with Aiken County to provide for the expenses of the park, the percentage of revenue application, and the distribution of fe- fees in lieu of ad valorem taxation and other matters related thereto. I would ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak on that public hearing item. Okay, see none. I will, um, read the third one, similar. Uh, conjunct- consideration of approval of public hearing of ordinance number 2021787, an ordinance authorizing the development of a jointly owned and operated industrial business park in conjunction with Aiken County, such industrial business park to be geographically located in Edgefield County and established pursuant to Section 41170 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, to provide for a written agreement with Aiken County to provide for the expenses of the park, the percentage of revenue application and the distribution of fees in lieu of ad valorem taxation and other matters related thereto. Is there anyone here to speak on that public hearing? All right, see none. The, um, the next public hearing, um, is consideration of approval of public hearing of ordinance number 2021789, an ordinance to amend Chapter 24174 of the Edgefield County Lord Land Ordinance. This is the comprehensive plan. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on that? Okay. The last item on, uh, for the public hearing section is consideration of approval of public hearing of ordinance number 2021790, an ordinance to rezone certain previously zoned General Agricultural Development District, GD, and unzoned property located at Edgefield Road and Williams Road to planned development, PD, and approve the concept plan for said property's development. I would ask, is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak on this public hearing? So what I'm gonna ask is if you would just come up one at a time. When you come up, state your name and your address, and you're allowed to speak on this issue as long as you'd like. But just bear in mind, the mo- you know, if you, if you're concise, you allow more time for others to speak. So, why don't you come first, ma'am, since you're at the end there? Come on, good evening.
Good afternoon. My name is Annie Ruth Williams. I am the widow of Henry Williams Jr., who was born on Williams Road 77 years ago, before his passing. He spent all of his childhood in the same area. After marriage, he wanted to raise his family in the same place where he grew up. We raised all of our children on this road. It has always been a quiet and peaceful place when the chil- where the children could walk and play up and down the road from morning to night, not having to worry about getting out of the way of cars or trucks. I know you all don't feel the same way we do about the road, and we don't expect you to because you don't have any connection with it. But I would like for you to think about, if you lived on this road, and how would you feel? I would like for my grandchildren to have these same experiences.
Thank you. All right. Come on.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
My name is Shannon Williams Brewer. I grew up on S- Williams Road, and I currently live in the upstate of South Carolina, in Greenville County. No matter whether we were driving from a short distance away or far, we would come and we'd hear that clicking of the signal light as soon as we were getting ready to go onto Williams Road. And as my mother mentioned earlier, there is a certain level of peace, a certain level of security, and a certain level of just pride that we have with that family road. It's not just a road. It holds the key to land that's been passed down through centuries. Early 1900s, we have several people that are here, several relatives here as well, from those descendants. And that is something that doesn't come all the time. We treasure the land, we treasure the hard work, the family commitments that are held within that ground, and it's sacred. And bringing in additional, and I'm a real estate, uh, agent as well. So for me, you know, to be able to look at the dichotomy of it, I can see it from both angles. And there are other options. There's land frontage that can be right at Highway 25 as opposed to dissecting or interfering with the Williams Road and Heritage Road. So those are the things that I, I ask for the council and for all attendees to consider. Um, with the memories, we explore that land. Uh, it's, it's not even a matter of, hmm, what came with this land? There was blood, sweat, and tears. There's sacrifice that came with that land. My father, Henry Williams Jr., my late uncle, Joshua Williams, all of the descendants, my late, several late uncles, several late aunts. So those are the things that I want to bring forth to this council so that you can maybe relate or even consider, but also to, to bring to mind as this is brought into Williams Road, Highway 25. Growth, we know, is a certain thing of life. However, you know, we're able to keep pecan trees for the nostalgia. We also can keep the nostalgia and the security and the, and the legacy of Williams Road. There are so many different things in our history that we need to continue to keep in, in, in consideration. And as I conclude, uh, this road and its inhabitants have earned the solitude and the beauty and the nature that God has given. My, my children are here as well, and, and, and my spouse and my sisters, and, and... This, this is something that is an experience. And these are experiences that, for the legacy of Williams Road, as Shannon Williams Brewer and as my mother, Annie Williams, has spoken, access to the new subdivision and, and any growth in that area should be directly from Highway 25 so that it doesn't infringe upon that direct traffic for us. But also to... but also to protect that road for where the ancestors brought through many, many centuries. I mean, you know, we look at early 1900s, as Mom said, you know. That is a time that is sacred, and we talk about being organic. This is something that is such an organic gift. And we ask that the council considers that and to remain Williams Road as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Norwigan?
I didn't write a speech. I kinda got used to the chatting back and forth venue that we had, the kitchen table discussions, and I kinda liked that a whole lot because you know I got questions. You know me. So, my biggest question, we have all been saying we don't want high-density developments, and this is our third PD development. We've said this for a long time, we don't want high-density. My biggest question I have here is who pays the taxes on this twenty acres of green space for this PD? Once it goes to the HOA, assuming there's not a membership fee for a country club or something, who pays the taxes? Do y'all know?
So, I'd be happy to answer that question. I mean, and what I'll do, if it's all right, is I'll use Windsor as an example. Windsor, the number of acres that was there, was in timber. And the tax on that timberland was very minimal. When that development is fully executed, the value of that development, I'm gonna guesstimate because I don't really know. The market's pretty fluid right now. Development costs are escalating pretty rapidly. But I think the value of that development will probably be in the range of thirty-five to forty million dollars. So, when they take forty percent of that development and put it in a green space, the taxpayers that live there will be paying the taxes on that full parcel. And the full parcel will generate significantly more tax revenue than when it was in timber. I don't know if that's answering your question directly. I think your direct question is, the green space, who pays the taxes because it goes into a nonprofit? But when you look at the total acreage and the tax revenue that currently exists on that property, it's very minimal. When it's fully developed, I don't know what the value of this particular PD will be, but my guess will be in the twenty-five million dollar range versus what it is today.
And I understand it will bring in more in the big picture. The problem I have is that we're giving the developers yet another benefit. You know, we know about the eighteen thousand, seventeen thousand dollars, the lower development fees they were given. But this is yet another benefit that I don't think people are aware of, that those green spaces, Windsor was seventy-two acres, Tavern Hill was forty-one point two-six acres, and Heritage is gonna be twenty acres. That is non-tax land. I don't get that. But yet, we're giving it to them. It's just another...
So, is there anything else you'd like to say?
That and if y'all are gonna do an emergency exit off of Williams Road, I'm very concerned if y'all considered that option because a locked emergency exit sounds very scary to me. Like, who's got the key for EMS? But I did see that mentioned as a suggestion, but a locked emergency exit doesn't sound like a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Sir, yes, sir, come on up, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Garrett, and I live on Williams Road. I married into the Williams family. And after being there, you know, I see the history that's on that road and from the Williams family. And just as the previous speaker said, the emergency exit, I think, should not come off of Williams Road because we have, I think they have plenty of Highway 25 space. Where if you put it on Highway 25, it doesn't have to be an emergency exit. It can be an exit. And I think that would be more beneficial to the subdivision as entering and exiting the subdivision. So, and as most of the residents on Williams Road, we do not want the emergency exit to come off of Williams Road. And it's an emergency exit now, and it's said that it's gonna be locked. Who's gonna maintain that? In other words, will it always be locked? Or will sometime in the future, it's not locked and it's used as a regular traffic pattern? So, we would prefer the emergency exit or the exit, yeah, both exits to come off of Highway 25.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak on this public hearing? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I am Maddie Williams, married into the Williams family. And I'm here just to ask you to think about the changes that you wanna bring to Williams Road. Right now, it's very quiet. It's low-key. People can walk without worrying about traffic, ride their bikes without worrying about cars or looking out for their safety. So, I'm asking you to not use Williams Road for any reason to access that property. We don't know what will happen when this area is developed, and we've never experienced it. So, we're kind of afraid of what's to come. But we are asking you to please not use Williams Road as an exit, but leave it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Didn't mean to do that. A little taller than most, I guess. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Sharita Williams. And I'm also here wanting to express my concern for the development that's coming or projected to come just north of Williams Road. I share all of the sentiments expressed before me, and I just want to add to that, okay? It's hard to wrap my head around why such a development would include kind of a secondary road, a road that I've grown up on, and I still live there, a road that's kind of falling apart, why we would try to attach that to a nice, brand-new, shiny development. It seems like with a new development, there is opportunity to create the entrances and the exits to match that development. So, therefore, I would suggest, and I think it was said prior, that the exit come off of Highway 25. We know that Highway 25, even Betis Academy, their roads have much more attention to their maintenance and their upkeep. And also, I think that those roads would better match the development. It's shiny, new, and that's what you should give those residents who are deciding to live there. I would also say to the council, excuse me, that you give some thought, too, to the amount of homes that are being considered. I wasn't here at the last meeting, but the layout that I saw, it seemed as if they were really packed in there. I have the privilege to travel outside of Edgefield County, and I would like to think that most people who come to a rural area, they don't really come here to live cramped on top of each other, but they come here to kind of spread out a little bit. So, maybe even scaling back some of those plans might be the way to go. But I just say in closing that, you know, we know that development is, you know, we can't stop that. We know that growth happens. But we just ask that their plans don't come at the expense of our property rights and our rights to maintain the livelihood that we already have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right. Yes, sir.
I'm Mark Gillum with Croll &amp; Company. I live at 3839 Honors Way, Martiness, Georgia. And I represent the developer. David Banks is our engineer. And I think, last time we were here, y'all had some questions that we wanted to address. And since we're talking about that exit, the emergency exit, when we went to the planning commission, we didn't want any entrance. But you need to be able to get in there in case you have a fire and the main entrance is blocked. So, it's only gonna be used if an ambulance needs to come in and the main entrance is blocked, or a fire truck's gonna come in and the main entrance, or maybe the police. But that's only, it's only there for emergency access to the neighborhood in the case of an emergency where the main entrance is blocked. And the main entrance is gonna be a pretty good size because David's gonna talk about the traffic study we had done because Dr. Kenyon was concerned with traffic. And we're gonna have a right-in, right-out, left-in, right-out, left-out, right-out lane and an entrance lane. So, it's gonna be a pretty big entrance. The thought of that's gonna be blocked for any reason. So, you can't get a fire truck in. It's pretty minimal, anyway. So, you know, it's not that we wanna have an entrance on Williams Street. It's that you need to have some way to get an emergency vehicle in the event that there's a problem in the neighborhood that can't be accessed in another place. So, that's...
Can I just ask a question about that real quick? And all EMS and public safety have access to open that gate, correct? Because that was one of the questions.
And if they don't, they always have devices that'll cut the locks.
So, because that was one of the questions. EMS and public safety would have ability... Sorry, you were gonna say something else. I just didn't mean to cut you off, but that was a question I had.
Yeah, I mean, that was on that. I mean, we do this, we do emergency access a lot. And it is, there will be a gate. We usually recess at twenty-five feet into the property. So, it's not visible, you know, it's not something you see. But it will be a gravel, gravel gate, usually twenty feet wide. And that'll, that's all it will be. And like Mark said, it will be used very sparingly. If ever, hopefully never. Like a few permitting one driveway in there, the residential driveway, it'd be way less traffic. Our site has shown, we have no access from that road. No lots backed up to it. It'll be common space between the right way and the rear of the lots that are close to that facility. Nobody will be able to get in through their back gate to, you know, service their pool. They will not have access through their common areas of space. So, anyway, and I just wondered, what you said about that access.
I think last time, you were concerned, you wanted some fiber cement on the front of the homes. And I brought Roger some package that I think he delivered to you guys what we had proposed. Instead of doing fiber cement, to do some brick and some stone on the front of the homes to give them a little bit more flair. Did y'all get those packages?
Yeah, looks good.
That was what we, we would rather do that than the fiber cement. And I think that it looks pretty good. Well, I think it looks a little better.
Yeah, I agree. So, I'm gonna just make a proposal. You know, you are number eight under Old Business, so I know you'll probably stick around. But I would ask, council, do you have any questions or comments that you'd like to ask them now? Or would you rather just wait until... Okay, Dr. Kenyon?
I think the question I would like to ask is that, since Williams, you all have, you all were sitting in the back and you all heard the comments from constituents about Williams Road, how they don't want no kind of interference. My thing, my question would be to you guys, after listening to what constituents stated about Williams Road, not using it at all, even as an emergency exit, have you ever thought about or considered going another route? Prime example.
Is there a second?
Yeah, is that a second exit as far as Betis Academy? Could Betis Academy be another road?
We don't own to Betis Academy. We can't get there.
Okay, but here's the thing. Looking at the map of Williams Road and what you guys are talking about building, looking at the map and the houses that you all are talking about building, it's gonna run to Betis Academy.
Not on this property. It doesn't touch, this property doesn't...
Okay, so maybe Williams Road is different from where I was born and raised. See, I was born and raised here, and I know what Williams Road.
No, but our property doesn't touch Betis Academy.
Okay, okay. I think what I'm saying is, after still hearing what the constituents are asking for, is there another consideration?
Yeah, we can now put it in and we was looking. I would attempt to talk to, DOT is not gonna give me a second drive.
Okay, so the first driveway would be, what, all 25?
Yeah, both of them, yeah.
Both of, all 25?
They may give us an emergency access. I haven't asked that question. I've gotten emergency access before, but they won't one point a minute because they're concerned about people stopping and going. They want to limit the number of stops.
Okay, I understand that. But I, and you know, I'm not trying to make this argument. I'm just trying to figure out, how can I or how can we get together and not use Williams Road? I think that would be the whole point, especially after so many have came tonight to state why they don't want you guys to use Williams Road, you know.
We're not, we're doing this for the regulations. I mean, getting another entrance in, it's not something we wanna do because it costs us money to put that emergency entrance. We're doing that to meet the safety guidelines. It's not something we wanna do. It's just, we're doing it to meet those guidelines. We don't have a choice.
Man, I don't know. Emergency access, to me, would you rather have that or somebody's house? What if somebody came in and bought the whole, what, seventy-eight acres and put their house in the driveway on Williams Road? Would they have an addiction to that?
Now, that's a question, council. I think it probably go directly to those constituents that live on Williams Road. I can't handle it.
It's not gonna be used by anybody, ever, unless an emergency situation.
May I?
Go ahead. Tiffany?
I just wanna point out that, first of all, we're not hearing anyone say they're against that development. So, you know, we have so many things that come before us, and people are so much against that development. So, they're not, you know, they're not boycotting or they're not trying to rise up against the development. And I thank y'all for, you know, being open to the development coming and whatnot. I think what they're asking, and I think of myself, if I lived on there, too, I would probably not want the emergency access. And I understand what you're saying about it would only be used in an emergency. I echo Mrs. Dr. Kenyon, and I would like to know if there is an alternate, could you put the emergency exit off of 25? Has that been explored? I would, one...
At this point, no, because I haven't asked that question.
So, that would be my first thing, is there an option there? And my second thing is, you talk about the emergency exit, and nobody would go down there and only have law enforcement or EMS or whatnot, and they have the tools to get through if they need to. The bad guys have the tools, too. You know, the bad guys will go down the road, too, and come in through. You know, that's... If it's there, if it's there, it's a gate, they're gonna use it. I mean, it's just...
They're gonna come into entrance. I'm not going through a gate.
Oh, they're going through the gate. They're going through the gate. Ask Al Zell, ask Al Zell. They're going through the gate. But I'm just saying, it's just something I want to bring up and just tell you that, and then again, these are probably things you've not explored because this is different, and I wasn't here in the first conversation. So, those are just my thoughts on it. If there's an alternate way, I appreciate that exploration.
Is your approval or not approval based on the gate? The gate's still an accessory. If that's the stipulation...
Yeah, I think that's the big problem, is not the development. Yeah, I think that's the big problem is not the development itself, it's just this gate, you know? And, and if there's an alternate way, why don't we try to make everybody happy here if we can? And, and that rarely happens, you know, so...
So any other comments or questions? Otherwise, we'll go, move this to under old business. Go ahead, Mr. Talbert.
Chairman, I would like to say, sitting here and listen to all the residents that live on Williams Road. And I'm quite sure I wouldn't want all that traffic coming down on the road I live on. And if there's any way that, just like it had been stated, they're not saying anything about the subdivision. They wanted, trying to do away with this traffic going to be coming down they, they driveway, uh, Williams Street. So if y'all can do anything to avoid that traffic coming down the street, I have no problem with it. But I really do have a problem with what they're talking about. Now, I'm, I'm going to be honest. And I think we should listen to, um, the constituents down on that end and, uh, and make them satisfied. They're going, you all going to be satisfied putting the subdivision in. So we may, can need to negotiate with something.
We're happy to eliminate the gate. It's up to you guys. So tell us eliminate the gate, we'll eliminate the gate.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we'll, go ahead.
If, if, if council decides to pass this on second reading, how about if you give us the opportunity, I could sit down with them and see if there's a alternate way to avoid using Williams Drive? And we could bring that back for third reading. There may not be. But you know, let us explore that and then come back to council on the third reading if you approve it tonight. Okay?
I have no problem with it. I think that'd be the best...
You're going to say till we get to it under old business? All right, thank you.
We apologize for coming forward.
No, we're glad that you did. So we appreciate it. No, you're, you're, this is great. Okay, thank you. So the next item is, uh, under old business, first item under old business. And this is consideration of approval of the third reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven eighty-four. An ordinance providing for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two general operating budget and establishing ancillary budgets for debt service E nine one one, administration, industrial park, solid waste disposal, victim bill of rights, emergency medical service, road maintenance, tri-county solicitor, assistant solicitor, school resource officers one, two, three, four, and five, and six, uh, event security, sheriff grants, clerk of court grants, pre-trial intervention, SRO grant, and criminal domestic violence. I would ask our administrator if there's anything to update us since our second reading.
We gave you some information. At the last meeting, we mentioned that we're not going to get as much revenue from the, uh, national forest, uh, parcels that we have within the county. But we're not going to have to pay as much for the indigent care. Those pretty well balance out. There's a couple of items that were in the sheriff's department that increased. That information was not with the second reading. It is here in the third reading. Uh, it's very light. Hopefully with your eyeglasses on, you could read it. And the only other thing that I wanted to bring up is we had a situation that came up recently where an employee had to use their vehicle to attend a meeting out of our area. And when they asked for reimbursement based on what I typically have seen, uh, which is the IRS rate, IRS puts out a rate that per mile that most governmental agencies follow. Uh, ours currently is at forty-two, forty-two cents. And so I would recommend that council would kind, would consider within the approval raising our rate up to whatever the IRS rate is. It fluctuates, um, a penny or two each year, but it keeps up with gas prices and other, uh, areas. It's currently at fifty-six cents. Uh, so that'd be the only other consideration that I would ask you to look at with this third reading.
Okay. So I would entertain, let me one second please. Entertain a motion to approve the third reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven eighty-four.
So move.
And I will second it. Is there any discussion based on what we just heard or anything else? Mr. Campbell?
A question for the administrator. Um, on the, on the mileage rate, I just want to, to understand the change being asked for from a staff standpoint. Are you asking us to change it from point forty-two to point fifty-six or to change it to federal IRS guidelines?
It, it's the federal IRS guidelines because it could be fifty-seven cents tomorrow. Or it could drop down to fifty-five cents. Currently it's at fifty-six. So it's, I'm asking you to change it to the IRS guidelines.
Just to make sure we were clear on that.
How often does it happen that the person, that we are utilizing this anyway with the personal use of a vehicle like this?
You're asking what happened?
No, I'm asking how often. I mean, is this like something that occurs monthly?
It may happen quite often. All I know is that in the last, I've, I've been here now two months. But we've had a couple of cases already with that. We tried to go ahead with the sheriff's department, especially, uh, that has to attend a lot of classes to use their vehicles. But right now because of, um, deer activity, we don't have quite as many spare vehicles as we once did. Uh, so a couple of people had to use their vehicles to attend those classes.
So it's not something that we're doing all, every month?
We try not to.
Okay, yeah. That, that's my question. We're not incurring this cost.
But when it happens, it'd be nice to have a, a rate that other agencies currently use.
Any other, uh, comments or potential amendments to the budget? Mr. Campbell?
So the, the two-page memo from the, from the administrator, uh, unless I've overlooked it, does not include what we heard earlier from archives. So that's not in here.
That is not in there, no.
So if we, I would, I would just recommend that, I'm, I'm assuming everybody's for it, but if not, that we just include that as part of this, you know, and just put it in as one, because we're making amendment, include these things, just include that in it. And, uh, as a matter of fact, I'll ask the administrator to make sure I'm reading this right. The actual, all the puts and takes is actually going to reduce the budget by six thousand some odd dollars.
That's correct.
So adding another thousand back.
That's right. That, that's not a problem. Uh, later, under my report, I'll give you some other great news where it's going to reduce it even more.
So I would, if you said that in form of a motion to add this, I would second that.
I will, I will move to amend the, uh, budget to reflect the, the information in this memo, which includes the, um, the mileage not being a, a number, but the IRS guidelines and includes the information given to us from archives tonight to add to that memo. So that's the amendment.
I would second that. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? To the, to the memo. All right. Seeing no other conversation, all in favor, um, of third reading of ordinance twenty, twenty-one, but to, to, for the amendment, all in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your hand. All right. That passes unanimously now. All in favor of, uh, approval of third reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven eighty-four as amended, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, and that passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. Next item, um, on the agenda is consideration of approval of third reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven eighty-five. And ordinance amending the county counts, uh, the county of Edgefield Comprehensive Land Use and Transportation Plan. There's been a lot of discussion about this and I'd like to, uh, turn the floor over to Mr. Campbell to talk about some things that we have discussed.
Thank you. Um, so what I'd like to, uh, propose, and I gave council an advanced copy of this. Um, I'm going to make two recommendations and I'm going to go through this very briefly. So my, my, in looking at, at the comprehensive plan, the changes that were made by county council in first, second, and third readings, which was April of twenty nineteen, May of twenty nineteen, and June of twenty nineteen. After looking through all that and sitting down with staff, which I'll talk more about in a moment, I'm going to recommend two things. First, that county council on this third reading of the revised comprehensive plan, vote to reverse the comprehensive plan to the original version of the plan as given to the county council by the planning commission in February of twenty twenty-one. In other words, reverse all the changes by county council during its three readings in twenty nineteen. My second recommendation is that the county council delay voting on this change for one month to take up this recommendation at the July twenty twenty-one county council meeting. I believe this delay would give citizens and council an opportunity to review these proposed changes thoroughly. And this delay would not impact or delay in any way the ongoing land management ordinance or the small group meetings. So I, um, uh, what I'd like to do is just very briefly tell you that there were ten changes, as far as I can tell, reading the minutes from April, May, and June from twenty nineteen. There were ten changes made to the comprehensive plan during those three readings. The impacts of changing the comprehensive plan back to the original document delivered to county council by the planning commission, um, have been reviewed by the administrator, Doc Hard, who heads the building and planning, John Ford, the consultant, and Kevin Singletary, our former planner. All four agree that reversing all changes to the comprehensive plan as I've described are at, are very small impacts or no impacts at all. And all changes will not impact the county's future in a negative way. So let me just briefly go through these, um, and, and give you an idea of what these changes were. Uh, for example, uh, number one, uh, one of the changes was brought for from a previous comprehensive plan, a bullet that says we'd encourage retail development around existing urban areas. There's no impact to the comprehensive plan of the county if we reverse that back. And by the way, all these I'm about to give you, the planning commission, if they think it's an issue, they can change it again. They can come back and give us another recommendation on any one of these things or multiple of these things. I don't think they will. I think they're in agreement with this. Because again, they gave us this document, which is another reason it doesn't have to go back to them. They gave it to us. Uh, so we're going back to what they've already approved. The second thing was two charts don't reflect multi-county residential, uh, in three different zoning areas. Again, no impact, um, because the multifamily residential topic is included in the planning commission's version of the comprehensive plan. Number three, it adds five overlay districts. Uh, removing these has no impact because it's still a part of that plan anyway, uh, if we revert back to their original language. So there's no change there. Uh, no impact, I should say. Number four was just renumbering chapter nine, no impact. Uh, number five was to change, uh, estate residential section by adding some language that I'm not going to go through. It's, it's, it's some language about the, the size of the lots, et cetera. Changing it back to what it was, again, has no impact on this. And number six, changing table seven point four on the suburban density residential line. It says it would read straight across as single-family, light residential, and commercial, uh, and industrial. Again, if we go back to the original wording, it would have no impact on that chart. Um, the seventh thing was, um, it was a long change. I'm not going to bother to read it to you tonight. The estate residential section was changed, again, to, to talk about different pieces and parts. Again, I would tell you, we would be changing it back to what the, what it said originally. And number eight, the map was amended by removing densities from the map only. Again, putting it back, um, to first reading, there's no impact to the, the comprehensive plan. And I'm, uh, not going to go through nine and ten because those are the things we discussed last time, which can, uh, the planning commission has already said that we should change it back. And we've already agreed we're going to change them back. So nine and ten are just the same. Seven point, uh, nine and seven point six changes that were listed in the agenda. So those are the changes. Um, and what I would like to do, again, I'm not infallible. Maybe I missed something. Uh, but it's, it's, my proposal is very simple. Reverse it back. If I've missed something, reverse it back. Everything goes back to, I'm going to say, March one of twenty twenty-one before we started making changes. So I want to be very clear on that. And I also want to be clear, this is not a third reading surprise change. I'm giving us one month to look at this and think about it. I'm not trying to spring it on us tonight. That's why my second recommendation is we take this up in July. Again, because it would be no impact to waiting one more month. And then if people want to discuss it at the next meeting or beforehand, and I would tell you that I would ask that this be put on the, the website, our website this week, if council approves it, so that everybody can read the changes, if we can put the minutes back up there, they could read the minutes. Um, and then all of this would come together in July and I think we could be done with the comprehensive plan. That would be my long recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
So, so your motion is to propose this, but table it until July. Table further discussion until July.
What I would, what I would actually like to do is amend tonight's ordinance to include, we're changing it back to the first, before the first reading from us, so that that is the thing that we have to approve next time. But also in my motion, I would, I would be saying yes, and let's put it off until the July meeting.
I will second that. Is there any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, all in favor of that proposal, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is, um, consideration of approval of third reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven eighty-three. Uh, an ordinance repealing sections two, three, one, four of the Edgefield County Code of Ordinances. And I would ask our administrator if anything... Nothing to add. So I would entertain a motion to, uh, approve third reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven eighty-three.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbert.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Campbell. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, that passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of second reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven eighty-eight. And I'm going to read one of the next four. They're all, well, there's a little, little difference nuanced, but this is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by and between Edgefield County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county as Project Light, which we know is Aiken Electric. And its subsidy for, subsidiary acting for itself, one or more affiliates and/or other project sponsors collectively, the company pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county. The project, the benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the company and the project, certain special source revenue credits in connection with the project and other matters relating thereto. And I would just ask, this is the second reading, if anything has changed on this, Mr. Administrator?
There's no changes.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven eighty-eight.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbert, and I will second that. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, that passes unanimously. Next one is very similar, but it's to be located in Aiken County. So I would entertain a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven eighty-six. Motion's been made by Councilman Campbell, seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That, that ordinance passes unanimously. Third one is, uh, next one is consideration of approval of second reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven eighty-seven. And, uh, this one is to be located in Edgefield County. I would entertain a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven eighty-seven. Motion's been made by Dr. Kenyon, seconded by Councilwoman Ireland. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That ordinance passes unanimously as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, I'd, I'd like to recognize, oh, did you leave? I was going to recognize Gary Stukesbury with Aiken Electric Co-op, who was here earlier tonight. Uh, they're the company that's going to be putting in the broadband throughout, uh, later on, I was, during my talk, I was going to let you take a look at the maps that I gave you that shows their territory, that they'll be going in. They hope to, in the next couple of years, to put broadband in to every current Aiken Electric Cooperative customer they have in Edgefield County. Uh, this will be broadband that's, uh, typically if you went, uh, like satellite, it's twenty-five, uh, megahertz. This is going to be a hundred. So this is four times what you'd normally get from satellite. And it's going to be at under fifty dollars a month. So it's something that's going to really make a major difference to the citizens and move us forward in the county. This is something that ten years ago, we were talking about, how do we get broadband for the students? How do we get in so people could have businesses in their homes? Um, and so they have already put in some of the lines and some of the equipment. And what you approved here tonight will allow them, uh, the ability from a financial standpoint to complete this project within the next couple of years. We have two council members, uh, the two ladies on the very right, they're on the subcommittee that's working with them. that's working with them, and we'll be giving you more detail as to how we could maybe get into some of those areas that might not even be in their territory. In other words, if it's a Dominion customer and they don't have broadband in their area, how can we go ahead and work with Aiken Electric Co-op to even get them broadband in those areas? So we want to make sure that everybody in this county has that ability to have broadband at a reasonable price, and this allows us to go forward.
And I didn't know he was going to be here, but maybe we could invite him to be a guest speaker.
He was here earlier.
Yeah, and I'm sorry he left, because I would have loved to have heard from him. So, thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of second reading of ordinance number 2021789. This is an ordinance to amend chapter 24174 of the Edgefield County Land Ordinance. This deals with lot sizes where there is no public water, public sewer. There is a little bit of a change since our first reading, so I'll ask the administrator if there's anything he would like to add.
At the last meeting, we had to develop this ordinance because we thought it was important to get something and not wait for the LMO. And so we came up with some numbers, a half acre and one acre. It went back to the planning commission. We wanted to get their input. They went from a half acre to one acre. So if a property has water but no sewer, they would have to have a minimum one acre to be able to develop. If it has no sewer or water, they're recommending two and a half acres. Some of this is going to depend in in the future when we do develop an LMO, which hopefully is going to be sometime this summer, late summer is probably when it'll come back to the planning commission. That may change. But at least until that time comes up, we're recommending one acre with water, one, two and a half acres with no water or no sewer for those kind of developments.
I think that's fantastic. So I would entertain a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 2021789.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion was made, I'll say, by Vice Chairman Talbert, seconded by Ms. Ireland. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, that ordinance passes unanimously, the second reading. All right, the next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of second reading of ordinance number 2021790, an ordinance to rezone certain previously zoned general agricultural development, GD, and unzoned property located at Edgefield Road and Williams Road to Plan Development, PD, and approve the concept plan for said property's development. We did discuss this a little bit, and y'all are still here. I would just ask, I'm going to invite you up, but Mr. LeDuke, is there anything you'd like to educate us on before we invite them back up to speak to us?
Just that at the last meeting, council had several questions concerning traffic going in and out of their development. We asked them to develop a traffic study to make sure that they had the proper de-acceleration and storage lanes. So if you're heading southbound or heading towards North Augusta and you wanted to turn into this development off of 25, you would have a storage area of probably about seven to 10 car lengths to stack up to make that left-hand turn. The throat or the opening on 25 opposite Academy Street, it's about 150 feet wide right now, so there's plenty of room to maneuver through. It's just if traffic going in the northbound direction is too heavy, it allows people then to stack up and get out of the travel lanes on 25. So we, I just got that study in about 3 o'clock this afternoon. I looked at it. This will have to eventually go to SCDOT because that's their property, that US 25, as to the improvements. But that's their recommendation, is to have that left-hand turn lane. Also, going out of the development, they're recommending, and again, this is the traffic studies recommending, as you're entering onto 25, there would be a right-hand turn lane and a left-hand turn lane. So again, we don't want to have traffic stacking up inside the development. And so if you want to go northbound, there's an exclusive lane. If you want to go leftbound, there also is going to be exclusive lane leaving the development. We talked earlier about how can we avoid using Williams Road as an emergency? I'll be talking to Mr. Banks about that, you know, trying to come up with another alternative. The only other alternative, though, if you look on the map of their development, is going to be something coming off of US 25. And there may be some restrictions from SCDOT as to how many driveways you could have and how far of a distance they have to be apart from one another as you look at the entrance going into the development. So that's that's a concern that we'll look at, but we will have that discussion. And I think there was a question of a guest that came up here earlier asking about the taxes from the development. I think it would be good if, because at the last meeting, you had mentioned how many dollars, I think it was in the $50 million range, that that would be ringing to Edgefield County, so you could mention that also.
Yeah, and anything else you want to add? And then we'll open it up for questions or comments from from council, if there are any. We may. We appreciate you being here.
Yes, good to be here. Last time, you were concerned with the access to the adjacent property, and what we would like to do there, this is a property that, not our property, the property that connects to Betis Academy. What we'd like to do there is reserve a lot and, you know, for some time to see if it can be connected up at some point in the future. If it can't be, or it's not desired to be, then we could, you know, convert it to just a neighborhood home. That's what we want to propose in that that situation.
I think that would be great. And, well, I'll open it to council first. We've already talked about the Williams Road entrance. Are there any other comments or questions that council has?
I've got one.
Mr. Campbell.
So, I'm sorry, I'm trying to remember. I don't have it right in front of me, but I know we've got it somewhere. The green space in this development is what percent, something like?
It's 25.
25%?
It's a little over 25%. We always cut that number down in case we have to do something we don't know as well. I think it's more like 27 or 28, but we kind of pulled back just because we had to design the stormwater deposits.
So 25% of 77 acres, is that right? Am I doing my math right? I mean, 25%? That's what you're saying, 25% of 77?
Yeah, 77 acres, yes.
All right. And does does that include the stormwater detention areas as considered green space?
No, that's what we call it. We don't call it green space because it would be common space, common areas, because there will be walking trails, actually, we're not going to the gravel or whatever that surface is. But in that, it's not included in stormwater deposits.
All right, and the commercial area doesn't count either toward that?
It is completely out of the green space, you know, common space here, yes.
But a playground park area would be included as part of the green space? All right. I'm certainly not a developer, so this is just something I'm curious about. The the smallest lots are closest to Highway 25, and the bigger, if you want to call them bigger, bigger lots are toward the, you know, middle to back of the, if you will, from Highway 25. Is there a reason for that?
Typically, people that buy smaller townhome lots, which is what those are, aren't looking for the quietness because there will be some noise coming from Highway 25, even though we have, I think it's a 40, 50-foot buffer between Highway 25 and the property. But they're, younger people usually, they don't really care about the quietness because they're looking like everybody, I would share a wall, so they would not. So we put the residents in much further back in the development to just quieter neighborhood. That's the thinking I went through during the layout. And also, that's a GR zoning. When we started this layout, we were not thinking, we were coming to the PD, and townhomes are allowable in the zoning case there for first quarter P. So that's where we were going with the layout, and then we started talking to the planning department, they suggested going to the front.
All right, and this is, I guess, a question for both the administrator and for you. So if perchance the council were to vote no on this, this same development could be done right here as proposed, maybe without the commercial, as as we see it today, is that correct?
Yes, without the open space, without, and the the commercial, I believe, would feel that it would be done also. Yeah, like I said, this layout was done based on council ordinance. And we didn't have the the dog park, we didn't have the other stuff, we didn't have walking trails, we didn't have buffers. We shifted to this, we were hoping to negotiate some of those things with y'all and realize that's what most people want on the in the planning side.
The, to answer your question a different way, the 77 acres that of land that they have, if it, we do not have a moratorium. So let's say the moratorium is over, and this plan was presented, it would not have to go to council, the planning commission would review it, and they could still build 202 homes within that space. What they have done, which I think is makes for, in my opinion, better development, is they have taken all that 202 lots and moved them towards the front, which then gives you what we call clustering of these homes, and gives you an open space that could be used by the residents of that area. And I'm sure other residents, maybe along Williams Drive, might use some of the walking trails and the dog park and the other areas that are within that development. But it it's an amenity that we probably would not have if it was built under the current ordinances that we have. Now, the one thing we don't know what's going to happen is once that LMO is rewritten, that the regulations for this area or other areas could change, and maybe they wouldn't be able to build 202 homes. So this is a trade-off of, you know, for them to be able to know that we're going to be able to build it in this fashion under the PD. But they could go ahead and build it the same density under our current regulations. That's the short answer.
That's all I have.
Any other questions, comments? I I have one, just, and if I, if it's in here and I missed it, the two orange lots, is that one of those, is the dog park in, one is in the back and one is on the corner?
Yes, the front, the front one is a, just a, what we, playground park area, and that's the one up by the road.
Okay.
It's, I think it's a dog park in the back.
And the dog park is in the back? Okay. And there, is there going to be a trail connecting the two?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other question I had is, when y'all were here in May, I asked if you would put together some landscaping ideas for Long 25. And I, for me, that's one of the things that's important, is just controlling that corridor. Is that something that, if you don't have today, you could bring back for third reading?
Yeah, and I drove out there after, I think it was two weeks ago, and I was looking at that. I mean, currently, it's either volunteer pines or planted pines, I'm not exactly sure, but it is a thick wall of vegetation there now. Our plant, because the property's so flat, we won't, we won't be doing a lot of grading outside of the lots. You know, I, to me, the trees, the pine trees that are there would be good to leave, and then some lower, lower landscaping, you know, to get that, to get more of a layered elevation.
Would the-
So, I mean, that's, that's what my thinking was. I meant to talk to Mark and go put something together for you all.
Would the HOA then be responsible for maintaining that to to keep it looking nice?
Yes, it would. It would be part of their land if that's what we had to do to, you know, if we did all landscaping, you probably had to cut all the trees down to plant the landscaping. That's what I didn't want to do, you know, just cut down trees just to put trees in.
Right.
You'd have to irrigate it, do that. I mean, I think that could be a stipulation put into that, especially if it's, because it will be maintained after the speech or something like that. I mean, it could be part of it. I would just hate to cut down-
Oh, I agree. I just know that pines, if you don't maintain it, I mean, it becomes kind of a mess over time. And so, okay. Those are the only two questions that I I had. If there's, Dr. Kenyon?
Since I'm not great at map reading, okay. And I'm looking at this map, and I see the walking trail, and I see the dog park, walking trail. So why the park playground couldn't be in the back where the playground? I mean, am I looking at the map right? I don't know, because I'm coming off, I'm coming off 25, am I right? When I come off 25, and I'm coming up in here, I see Williams Road, I see, so I'm going inside. I would just wonder why would the playground be up where phase one and phase two?
Yeah.
Better topography there, there.
Yeah, right there is pretty good. I I use the playground in doing the layout. If the area directly across the street from playground is also common space, it's not really marked well on here on the map. You can see it's not a lot. I use that as a differentiation between the townhomes and the single-story lots. But the, but the playground will be that connection between those two. Where we put that, it just seemed like a logical place.
More towards the center and bring lots around that.
And I-
Yeah, I do see your point.
Yeah, because I'm thinking, if I'm walking and I have a little child, and I'm walking around the track, it would be more feasible for me to look over at the playground and see my child walking around while I'm walking around the track, than my child over here in the far corner on a playground, and I'm up south, north, or whatever, around the track. You see what I'm saying?
I do.
Okay. I, you know.
I would, we'll, we'll take that into consideration. I'm not, I'm not, yeah.
Yeah, I feel you. I would just wonder why would the playground be-
It just seemed like a logical place when we were doing it-
Okay.
-to have a break between the townhomes and the single-story.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's, that's what my thinking was.
Okay, I got it.
But I do see the the benefit of being more central.
Okay. All right.
Is there anything else, other comments you want to make?
Doug, if you can ask about traffic. And we did supply the traffic report, and I really don't want you to have to get bogged down because I'm not traffic engineer, so I don't, I get lost in it myself. So I asked them directly where where to find what I was looking for. You asked about delays of getting in and out of development.
Right.
There's an appendix F on that.
It's an appendage?
Appendix F. It's about two-thirds the way back into the into the report. And there's, there's a, there's a table of delays, how long, and these are during, this is the worst case during the, like, turning out of the development, you know, and how long it's going to take you to get in and get out.
Right, right.
This is during the, it's called the peak hour, which occurs, there's a peak hour AM, which everybody's going to work.
Right.
And then the peak hour in the FM, which everybody's coming home from work, pretty soon. But the the worst case getting out is the left-hand turn coming out, as you would expect, and it takes, it takes a 19-second delay. That's during that time where the traffic set is worse, and your, your people that are leaving is at its worst. The good thing about that is during that time, there's not a lot of people leaving the neighborhood when most people are coming home from work. And there are some, but it's not, it's not giving, giving, but there is a delay section in there, and that's future, that's 10 years from now. That's not, we did a 10-year, well, it's a seven-year build-out, but a 10-year projecting into the future of the, of the delays. So I did want to answer that question if you had to ask.
Appreciate that.
There is no regulation or design for delays, but 11, 19 seconds is not that long. And that is the worst case during one time of the day.
Going left, out of there.
Going left, out of there.
Which probably a large, well, it's hard to say what what will be in the 10 years in the future.
Really, the traffic, there is, we did two days, or a full day of traffic, and it is very evenly left, right, both all times of the day. It's broken out all different ways. In the morning, there's just many people going one ways up. It was really just, so we did a 50% split on the people leaving the site because that matched the existing traffic. So.
Okay. The only other comment that I have- Okay. The only other comment that I have is, so when you come back for third reading, you will have researched the potential of having us, an entrance somewhere, um, an emergency exit somewhere else.
And the landscaping.
And the landscaping, okay. Well, we appreciate you being here tonight, thank you very much. So, I would entertain a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven-ninety.
Go move it, Chairman.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbert, and I will second it. Is there any further discussion? None. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, that passes unanimously. We will now move on to new business, and, um, first item under new business is consideration of approv, oh, you know what? I, I wanna ask real quick, uh, county council, would you mind if I, I gave Mr. Stukesbury an opportunity to give us an update? Okay, Mr. Stukesbury, we're glad you're here, and, uh, we did already go through all that, but wanted to hear anything you wanted to share with us about Aiken Electric and the expansion of...
Well, I appreciate, uh, the opportunity, and thanks for, um, recognizing me. I'm not an engineer, but I can spell it, so. Roger, for you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate the opportunity to come and, uh, talk about Project Light, something Aiken Electric has worked on now for almost two years. And the board voted back last, uh, early fall, and because of some things we were doing, because of the, the Art Off auctions from the FCC, we couldn't talk about what we were doing, there were a quiet period and all that good stuff. But the, uh, the good news is, either tomorrow, or certainly by the end of the week, we will light our first internet customer out toward the Tri-Cities area of our subs, of our service territory, near Wagner, Sally, and Perry. Now, I know that's not of interest to this group, uh, but the good news is, is I was coming up, uh, to Edgefield this afternoon, our backbone, which is a two-hundred-and-eighty-eight strand fiber optic network for the Aiken Co-op's use, is on the Dominion poles as we come through the town of Edgefield. Uh, we're right in behind Penderver Chevrolet, uh, and that's the way we're getting to our Edgefield office. So, we are putting in a backbone of two-hundred-and-eighty-eight fiber strand, which is the largest single cable made. So, we have made a decision that we're gonna build this system very robust, just like we do our electric system. Uh, and so, we're excited about that. The better question is, uh, when will we be in Edgefield County? Uh, our goal and objective is, the first quarter of next year, we will, uh, be in our Edgefield substation, putting in the control house and the electronics, and then we will come out of the distribution from there. Uh, we are days away from lighting the Johnston substation in Saluda. And that's where, uh, I'll give you my best AT&amp;T story. Uh, Timmerman, um, one of our industrial customers up there at the sawmill, got a letter about six weeks ago and said, oh, by the way, um, July one, your copper, copper line that you get your internet on, we're gonna, we're gonna discontinue it, you on your own. So, he called Tucker Miller, our area director, in a panic and said, Tucker, do I need to go buy a satellite? The good news is, you don't. Uh, we're gonna light the, uh, Johnston substation July one. So, we're coming from South Carolina Pet Foods, uh, is where we're connecting with Carolina Connect, and we're coming to Johnston. This summer, we will be at the Mason substation, which is, you know, north of here. But the good news is, we probably have two-hundred-and-seventy miles of the two-hundred-and-eighty-eight fiber backbone. There's gonna be seven rings around our service territory, so if it gets broke, we can reroute the traffic. So, people will not be out of internet service. We're gonna treat this just like we do our electric service. When your internet doesn't work, somebody will be called, it'll be fixed. Our call center is in Lexington, so when you call, it will not be a fifty-minute on hold with someone, uh, that doesn't really care. Uh, our goal and objective, when the phone rings, somebody's gonna answer. So, we're excited. Our partner is Carolina Connect. Uh, they currently serve Newberry Electric Co-op and Mid, Mid-Carolina Co-op. And so, Aiken now is the third co-op in that consortium, and so, they do all the back office stuff. They do the phone, they do the technical, they do the installation. So, Aiken Co-op will run the fiber to our members to your home, and then from there, Carolina Connect technician will show up. There will be a, a free router, they'll put the, uh, wiring or the, the fiber to the, the router, and you're good to go, forty-nine ninety-five for a hundred by hundred. Uh, and if you want a gigabyte service, it's eighty-nine dollars for residential, so. Any questions?
That's huge. Any questions or comments from council? I don't think so, but we are, we are grateful.
Well, we're, we're excited, it's, it's been a long time coming. We thought we had another partner, we thought we could do this a different way, but we finally ended up with, we're gonna do the gold standard and do it this way. Uh, and hopefully, as time goes on, we can figure out how to get to the Dominion customers of Edgefield County. Uh, we'll, we'll try to figure that out as we go, but the good news is, if you're served by Aiken Electric, we're coming to, to your house at some point.
Well, we appreciate you being here tonight, and if I would've known you were coming, we would've put y'all on as a guest speaker at the very beginning, so thank you for...
Well, it was a rookie mistake. I told Will I hadn't been to many public hearings, and when you, I, you caught me flat-footed there.
Alright, thank you. Okay, uh, next item under new business is, um, consideration of approval of first reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven-ninety-one, and ordinance to rezone certain previously zoned general agricultural development GD and unzoned property located at two-ninety-three Murrow Road to Plan Development PD, and to include said parcel into the existing Windsor Plan Development. And I'll just ask the administrators to exhibit...
This was approved unanimously by the planning commission. This is a lot that has an old trailer that's gonna be removed. They want to add this to the development that was approved under PD. Uh, they will go ahead and put a house on it, but the house will face, uh, the interior of the development, so there will not be another driveway, they'll eliminate the driveway that's currently on Murrow Road. And so, essentially, they're just adding this lot to their development under the PD status.
And I would just add, I drove by there, I don't know if anyone else, that lot has already been cleaned up, it looks great, so. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven-ninety-one.
Go move it, Chairman.
Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbert, and I will second it. Is there any discussion? Alright, seeing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, that passes unanimously, thank you. Next item is consideration of approval to move forward with the law enforcement center, and this is, uh, I'll just turn that over to Mr. Administrator to explain to us what's going on.
We've talked about this for the last couple of months, and we believe we're ready to move forward with the law enforcement center. This was on the local option sales tax referendum that the citizens approved a couple of years ago. We've had a study that, called a need study, done by Mosley, and they determined what the size needed to be for the new jail, also for the law enforcement center, that's where the sheriff would be at, and the new magistrate offices would be at. The land will be at least twenty, it could be as high as forty acres in size. Uh, the sheriff would like to go ahead and have it somewhere in and around the Edgefield, the town of Edgefield area, so that they would be centrally located. Obviously, the population base is higher on the southern end of the county than it is on the northern end, but they don't wanna get too far from a distance standpoint to meet the needs, uh, especially when you start looking towards the northwestern portion of our county. There are three different things that I'm gonna be asking your approval tonight. Uh, the first thing is, we did meet with Franny Heiser. Franny Heiser is the individual with Burr Foreman that put together the local option sales tax referendum. Uh, that firm has also worked with us for a number of bonds, uh, that we have used the past to obtain vehicles and equipment. And we would like to go ahead and use that firm to go ahead and put together the bond that's gonna be necessary for this facility. The facility will cost probably in the range of twenty-seven, twenty-eight million dollars, uh, for the land and for the magistrate, the sheriff's office, and the jail. Uh, if you haven't had an opportunity to visit our jail, uh, you'll, would understand why we need a new jail. And it's antiquated, uh, it's in very, very bad shape, and we have had, again, since I was here in twenty-eleven, we talked about the jail back then, and we keep talking about it, and this is the opportunity to move forward, and that's what the bond was for. Burr Foreman will go ahead and put together a bond package for us. Some of you are very familiar with this, but some may not be. We have the taxing ability for bonds, up to eight percent of our tax base. And once you get over eight percent, then you have to go out for a referendum and get approval from the citizens. To avoid that eight percent, what the county would do is to develop a nonprofit organization. The nonprofit would consist of three citizens, probably the chairman would be a, someone with a financial background. Those three citizens would go ahead and form a nonprofit, which then would borrow the money, and essentially, we'd be paying the nonprofit back on a yearly basis for use of that facility until it's paid off. Once it's paid off, the nonprofit would go away. So, their role is, develop a bonding package and develop this nonprofit. We will have a resolution for the next meeting. Franny Heiser will be here, depending on what day it is in July, she will present that resolution, you'd get approval, and then we'd start the process to develop this bond and this nonprofit. It takes anywhere from four to six months just to get through that process. In the meantime, if we want to go ahead and buy the property or do anything else, we have the capacity, and that'll be in the resolution, to borrow money from ourselves. Again, we have reserves based on three months of our revenue, and we could go ahead and borrow from that reserves and not have to trigger that bond until necessary. So, if we are getting in under the one-cent sales tax, a little over a million dollars a year, we could easily go twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three before we actually go ahead and say, let's get the bond. Borrowing some of the money, plus receiving the local option sales tax money that's coming in. So, from a financial standpoint, we're more than adequate to continue moving forward with this project, which brings me to the second thing that I would like your approval on, and that's to go ahead and start the process to hire the architect. You'll still have the opportunity to approve the contract and the architect that we will be choosing. But we'd like to get the committee back together to interview two or three or four, uh, potential architects. Once we select one that we feel would be most favorable for building this or designing it, we would then ask them for a contract, and that contract would come back to council for approval, and then they would be hired to start the work. The design itself is gonna take probably at least a year, to design it, to go ahead and get bids for it, and to go out for bids. So, it'll be at least this time next year before we could probably even bake, break ground on it. That's assuming we hire that architect, uh, at the August meeting. So, we'd like to get started, hire the architect, uh, bring that to council, have them start the drawings. As they're spending money, we'll be using the one-cent sales tax to pay their fees. Once the design is completed, we go out for bids, at some point in there is when we're gonna have to look at the bonds that we will have to go ahead and obtain. So, that's the second thing. The third thing is, we'd like to go ahead and hire Mosley Architects, they're the ones that did the need study. They are probably the, the premier architect for designing jails, if there's such a thing. And they have designed several jails in South Carolina. They know exactly what's needed as far as land is concerned, the size of land, the topography of the land, uh, to be able to do environmental studies, to make sure we're not gonna wind up with any problems. So, I'm asking you permission to hire Mosley to do, uh, a land feasibility study, probably on two to three sites. Uh, we know that we want to at least study the site at, uh, where Rabbit and Star come together. There's a fairly good s, sized piece of property. We think there may be some property off of Sweetwater Road. We don't even know if these are for sale, but they leased are in the area where we have water, sewer, and broadband. And so, we'd like to hire them to go ahead and help us with that land feasibility. It will cost four thousand dollars approximately per site to do the environmental studies and to do the feasibility on those pieces of property. So, if we do two properties, that's eight thousand, three properties is twelve thousand. So, like to have approval on that, like to have the go-ahead to start doing the interviews for the architect, and thirdly, uh, to allow us to bring Burr Foreman at the next meeting, to have you look at and hopefully approve the resolution for them to move forward to get the funding for this project.
Roger, I have one, one question, and we could maybe make motions and discuss it in the motion, but the, the committee to hire an architect is the same committee that did the needs assessment, correct? And those individuals are...
I believe it was the sheriff, um, I wanna say somebody from the magistrate's office, uh, and was there someone from council that was on it?
Jackie, did you attend those meetings?
Obviously, I wasn't here.
It might've been, or, okay, so we would assign one member from council?
I'd like to have one member from council to be on there, so it'd be a, three, plus myself.
With the magistrate's office and sheriff's office.
We'd probably have, like I said, three to four, we'd send out a, a request for proposal, uh, do that through SKEBO, the South Carolina Business Opportunity, and ask them to present it. We'd select, we'll probably get at least a half a dozen, we'll narrow that down to probably three, and then do the interviews, and then come back.
Okay. Well, I would entertain a motion to, uh, give the administrator approval to hire Burr Foreman to put together the bond package and the forming of the nonprofit.
Well, ask them to make, put together the package for a presentation to council.
Okay. Put together the presentation for council, which would be in July, they would be able to come in July?
They would be coming to the July meeting.
I'd entertain a motion for that. Or I will make the motion that we give you authorization to hire Burr Foreman to make the presentation in July for a bond package and the forming of a nonprofit.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Campbell, is there any discussion?
I do have a couple of questions.
Ms., Ms. Iron?
Um, in re, in relation to the nonprofit, who will put that together?
Uh, we'd be asking Burr Foreman for assistance, because they have done this. In fact, the Public Safety Building in Aiken was just done by Burr Foreman using a nonprofit. They took an old food line, uh, shopping center, and then developed that, but they used a nonprofit for that.
So, who would be, would we bring them suggestions of who to put on?
Yes, I mean, they're, they're gonna say we're gonna need three, these are the type of individuals...
Would propose people to be on it, that would be us who would, council would do that?
Yes, yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay. Um, and also, um, before you do the evaluations of the properties, will you first make sure they are available?
Yes. Well, we, we, we need to kind of scope them out, and then once we think that they're feasible, before we even have Mosley really investigate, and especially doing the Phase One environmental study, uh, we need to make sure they're available and, and make sure that the price is reasonable.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor of authorizing the county administrator to work with Burr, Burr Foreman to put together a package to bring to us in July for the bond package and the nonprofit, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, that passes unanimously. Next item that I would entertain a motion on is to, uh, give permission to the architect committee, to reconvene, to, to look at bids.
To go ahead and select an architect and bring back the contractual agreement to council.
So, I will make the motion.
Second.
Uh, seconded by Mr. Talbert. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, that passes unanimously.
And, and who on council will be the representative?
Well, that was the, that... I think, yeah. You're willing to continue in that, with that? Thank you. Alright. And then the final item is to, um, I'll just go ahead and, I, I make a motion that, to give the county administrator permission to hire Mosley to do a land feasibility study on two to three, um, potential sites. permission to hire Mosley to do a land feasibility study on two to three potential sites. Seconded by Vice Chairman Talbert, is there any discussion on that? All seen none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, that passes unanimously, thank you. Next item under new business is consideration of approval of the sewer easement for Edgefield Water and Sewer Authority. And this is Exhibit 10.
The John Hare, who is heads up the Edgefield County Water and Sewer Authority, visited with me the other day, and the federal prison that's to the southeast of the town of Edgefield has probably the largest supply of sewage from any particular entity they have in the county. Right now, all that sewage goes to the Horse Creek Treatment Plant in Aiken County. And they would like to go ahead, and they have a much cheaper way. They could save tens of thousands of dollars every year by sending that sewage up to the former Johnson Sewer Treatment Plant. To do that, though, they need to put it in a line, and the best route is, let's see, where are we at? Right back here is the railroad track. They tried to buy the railroad property that's behind the parking lots and the compound yard that the sheriff has. They would not sell it to the Edgefield County Water and Sewer Authority. So the second best was to come to the county and ask to be able to use fifteen feet of property for an easement to put the sewer line. It would not interfere with any of the facilities we have, none of the parking lots or the compound yard. Once the sewer's in, you won't even know it's there. But they're asking the county for an easement to put that sewer line in. You have a copy of that in your exhibits.
I would entertain a motion for consideration of approval of the sewer easement for Edgefield Water and Sewer Authority. Motion's been made by Vice Chairman Talbert, seconded by Mr. Campbell. Is there any further discussion? All seen none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand, and that passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is consideration of janitorial bids. This is Exhibit 11.
Okay, I'm going to go back just a little bit in history. In 2011, we had a contract with Southern National. And Southern National has been doing this for well over ten years, the janitorial service within the county. At that time, it was around $110,000 a year that we were paying for janitorial services. And we went to council and talked to them about reduce, still using them, but reducing their service by sort of every day going to all of our facilities, going a couple of times a week, instead of going at night to all of our facilities, using the daytime for some of those facilities. And we were able to get the price down to in the $60,000 range. We saved tens of thousands of dollars by working with them and working with council. So we had a five-year contract then, then we had another five-year contract in about 2016, and the contract's up again. We solicited bids just recently. The bid was based on four different criteria. It wasn't just based on the lowest price, because lowest price is good, but you also want quality of service. And so we said 25% of the contractual agreement or awarding would be based on price, 25% based on how they filled out the form. If you looked at the form, there's, it was lots of numbers they had to fill out. We wanted to make sure they understood exactly what needed, was the needs of us. We also said that they needed to, everybody needed to come on a pre-bid walkthrough of all the facilities. They knew exactly what we expected at each facility. And we wanted them all to have it on a sealed bid package, not an email. So one of them gave us an email, we disqualified them. One of them didn't do the walkthrough, we disqualified them. And then the two that are qualified, we also asked for references and past experience. So in other words, if we had a company that we had used maybe ten years ago and didn't do a good job, we'd have some past experience. Freeman, one of the janitorial services, we don't have any experience with. Southern National, we do. We had a couple of different officials within the county that gave us recommendations, saying they'd love to see them continue. Freeman, we checked on all the references they gave and looked at the references. Everybody gave them great marks. However, they were only one-time jobs. In other words, they were hired to maybe clean a facility, or maybe to wax the floors or clean the carpet. We didn't have anybody that had an ongoing, continuous service that we could review. So we would give them good marks for the fact that what they did looked very good, but we don't have that experience. I did not make a recommendation. Maybe that was the easy way out. The price differential is 3.5% between the low bid and the other bid. The current price was 63,850. So Southern National is going up in price about 12% from what their previous price was at. We would be acceptable for either one. However, Southern National, we do have the past experience, we do have the history. We do know they did, they do an excellent job. And when we made the change in 2011 to doing daytime service, they have been very good to not disturbing us during the day and working with us. And if we ever needed to have a call back, because they're, are available five days a week within the county, if something happened, they'd come and help us out. So we, we had no negatives on them whatsoever. So we bring this to you to choose between Freeman and Southern National.
Dr. Ken.
Southern National, they jumped up from something like, they jumped up at 9.6% increase.
Yes, they went from the 63,850 to 69,970. Again, they had, previously had a five-year contract. So this contract here, this price would, should be held for the next five years. So we could renew it if we're satisfied with their service, but...
But they, they, this price will be consistent for the next five years. And the 63,850 was consistent the previous five years.
But that, again, that was five years ago. So if you look at it, it's like a 2% increase every year.
So I would...
But that's still, that's still a lot increased, though, you know?
Do we know why? Were there any reasons for the increase, or just?
I didn't hear you.
Was there any reason given for the increase, or was it just kind of?
Just, just the fact that it was five years ago, that they had the price at 63,000. Chemicals and other things, of course, gone up, salaries, et cetera.
I would entertain, I would be happy to make a motion, but I would be happy to entertain a motion from a member of council as well.
From a cost standpoint, if I can add one more thing before we make a motion. If we worried about the 63 going to 69, keep in mind that Freeman's bid 67, and that's higher than 63, too. You know, I mean, they didn't have the job, but they bid very close. So the difference in those, obviously, is the administrator points out, is only 3.6%.
It's 24, $2, $2,400 difference.
Like you said, we've just had people contacting us who have used. I, I'm not in the office, so I don't use them myself. You know, I've seen them out cleaning windows or, you know, late in the afternoon when I've come to the admin building, I might see them about or whatnot. But we did have public officials and others who contacted us in favor of them, who feel confident in them coming in their offices and whatnot, because it is a lot of, it could be sensitive stuff that they're being around, you know? I know that was a point made when y'all, when council looked at it five years ago. That was one of the things, you know, one of the discussions came up was, they are around some information that...
Very sensitive.
Right, right. So that weighs with me, just knowing that they've handled it and done it, and, you know, and we did get calls to please continue with them, so that kind of, so...
Would you like to make a motion?
Before you make the motion?
Yes, please go ahead.
I would like to say, Roger, you don't like to give a recommendation, but what do you? Not trying to put you on the, on the touch spot.
You know, the fact that they're, Southern National is a known quantity. Freeman could do a very good job. I don't know, we, we could, they didn't give us any references that said, hey, they clean our business three times a week, and they've been doing it for the last five years. So I don't have that history with them. The price differential is not that great. I mean, when I look at it over a 52-week period of time, I mean, we're, we're talking very small amount per week. The fact that we were able to get, and these came from elected officials in very sensitive areas, both were very complimentary of Southern National. As I said, I worked with them in 2011, I worked with them in 2015, and I'm working with now. The same person that was cleaning it in 2011 is still cleaning it today. And there must be a reason for that. And they do, they, they did an excellent job then, and I still, so, based on the fact that the bid package said that it was not based just on low price, it was based on history and experience and low price, I would recommend Southern National, but I'm not going to recommend them.
Okay. You off the hook.
And for me, it kind of comes back to, to, like you said, we, we have had them coming in, and the other company hasn't had the type where they come back over and over and clean and facilitate that. That's, these are my thoughts on it.
If you make the motion, I'll second it.
All right, I made the motion, we go with Southern National?
You're right.
All right.
And you second it?
I'm going to second it.
Motion for Southern National is made by Councilman Ireland, seconded by Vice Chairman Talbert. Is there any further discussion? All seen none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That passes unanimously, thank you. Mr. Williams, we're so glad you're here. The last item on, the next item on the agenda, second to last item on the agenda, is approval of a concept plan for the Edgefield County Industrial Park signs. I don't know if you'd like to come up and talk about that?
Those, the chairs are mighty uncomfortable. Maybe a small expenditure in getting a little more comfortable chairs would be, would be well-spent, because there are many people in this room that spend more time here than I do at meetings. So we, the industrial park signage that exists there has been around since the park was created in 1999. Obviously, we've, and we've known those haven't, those aren't good signs. And Dr. Kenyon, when she, before she was sworn into office, that was one of her big issues, was signage in the industrial park. Well, if you will remember, Highway 25 was in the process of being widened. We know how things happen sometimes when projects going on like that. So we wanted to make sure that that project was completed before we move forward with getting new sign, signage designed. Highway 25 gets completed, and then we have a little company come in that we all know now as Generac, so we needed to delay that. So what you have in your packet before you is a signage concept that we've had an engineering firm that we work with to draw renderings. Obviously, it would be to fit county code. It would also be in the current color patterns that, of the other signs that the county has. The South Carolina Department of Commerce has site enhancement grants periodically, and we have the opportunity to get a grant coming up that we will be submitting for to work with, with the county to do these signs. Obviously, the state's money is always the last mile dollar, so, you know, there's a request for the county to fund some of this, and, and the partnership will put some of our state allocated dollars in behind as well. And these signs, there will be a sign on Highway 25, and then there will be a sign just as you would turn in on Generac Way.
Is there anything you want to add in terms of cost?
Not concerning the cost that they have of the $308,000. Again, some of the money's going to come from the Commerce Department, some of it'll be coming from EDP. We will need to raise or give about $225,000 plus or minus towards that. We have $500,000 in the budget for next year, for the road and for the sign. The road is going to cost over $800,000. EDP is doing the engineering. The Dominion Energy is going to provide $100,000 towards that. AT&amp;T has already agreed to pay $100,000. The CTC is willing to give up to $300,000 for C funds. And we are going to the Upper Savannah Council of Government, and we're requesting funds from their development funds. Typically, we would get up to 50% of the road, or about $400,000. So it could be 200, it could be 300, it could be 400, but we're expecting something. So we're, at the very worst-case scenario, we would have to use $300,000 of that $500 for the road, leaving about 200. But we think that the road, most of it, if not all of it, will be accounted for through these other agencies, and the county would not have to use our funds, which means we have more than enough funds to pay for our share of the sign. Would you not agree, Mr. Williams?
I would agree. Talking, this would be an Economic Development Administration grant. And talking with Mr. Layman and his staff with a project like this, it's typically up to 50%. He thinks that we could get 60% or more. So basically, we'll be providing $200,000, a little over $200,000 for the engineering. The county would contract out the road construction, which is roughly $600,000.
Does council have any questions or comments for Will regarding the concept plans? Dean, you, you were involved in that, those meetings too, correct?
Dr. Kenyon and I were on the subcommittee to work on that signage, yes.
Did you, either of you care to make any comments?
The, the signage you see there is, as Mr. Williams would tell you, is not the final sign. The look is, but the actual colors and all that'll be, you know, that'd be rendered by an actual design. This is just a firm that kind of gives you the, the basic concept. So we, we agreed, I think, that this was, this fit the character of Edgefield County.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the concept plan for Edgefield County Industrial Park signs. Motion's been made by Councilman Campbell, seconded by Vice Chairman Talbert. Is there any further discussion? All seen none, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Will, for being here till the very end, we're grateful. All right. The last item on the agenda is, under new business, is Edgefield County July meeting date. We know July 4th is that weekend, on Sunday, so Monday is a holiday. I just want to make sure everybody can be back here for a meeting on Tuesday, July 5th. Or, or if there's four, the five of us can be here, we could still have a quorum. Sunday, so this is, our scheduled, normally scheduled meeting would be Tuesday, July 6th. So everybody's okay, so I would just, no vote is necessary, we'll just continue with that. I do want to add to this, though, the August meeting is Tuesday, August 3rd, and that is the final day of the South Carolina Association of Counties meeting. So I would like to make a proposal that we move the August meeting to Wednesday, August 4th, if that's possible, or I would entertain another date. Is that okay with council? I don't hear any negatives, so we'll, we'll, we'll move it to Wednesday, August 4th. Do we need a vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, so I would, I will make a motion that we move the August regularly scheduled meeting to Wednesday, August the 4th. Seconded by Vice Chairman Talbert, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right, that passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is comments from the public, and I would like to start, I know there's a list for those maybe who have already signed up, but I'd like to start with Ms. Marion Bland, who would like to speak on the Johnson Avery Bland... have already signed up, but I'd like to start with Ms. Marion Bland, who would like to speak on the Johnson Avery Bland Cemetery. Okay, and thank you for your patience in waiting.
Thank you all for listening. My name is Marion Bland and I'm here to ask for the council's support with the Johnson Avery Bland Cemetery Restoration and Preservation Project. This family cemetery is located at the southeast corner of Bland Baptist and Weaver Roads. The first Bland to reside in Edgefield County was Robert, who came here from Virginia in the seventeen seventies. Robert and his son John fought in South Carolina during the Revolutionary War and John was killed at the Clouds Creek Massacre in seventeen eighty-one and is buried in the mass grave in Leesville. The Blands owned quite a bit of land between Edgefield and Johnston and lived on the family plantation called Woodlands. They were very active in the community, including Mount Tabor Baptist Church and then later Johnson Baptist Church. The Bland family donated the land for the Edgefield County poorhouse to be built on in eighteen thirty-one. Johnson Bland was the eldest of six children. According to the Edgefield Advertiser, twenty-five May eighteen seventy-two, Johnson was a substantial farmer and early booster of Johnston. He was a lieutenant in the Civil War and fought alongside his famous brother Lieutenant Colonel Albert Bland, who was killed at Chickamauga and is buried here in the Willbrook Cemetery. Johnson donated lumber from his sawmill to the local Irish priest, Father Timothy Birmingham, so that the pastor could build his church. He was a loving father to his twelve children and as such is the great-great-grandfather to many families in Edgefield County today, including not just the Blands, the Mobleys, the Shumperts, the Sawyers, the Turners. The efforts to restore Johnson's Bland Cemetery are being completed in project phases. So far, we have cleared the debris and we've removed the old fence. We are waiting delivery of new fence posts. And then we can begin installing a new fence. Our goal is to have these tasks completed by the end of August and all the labor is being provided by volunteers. We are here asking for assistance with material costs. The Edgefield Preservation Association is helping with this restoration and preservation effort. They've provided expertise, research assistance, volunteer labor, and donations. They are our sponsors. We have been networking throughout the community, generating interest in family cemetery history and our efforts have led to the donation of a beautiful old, hundred-year-old wrought iron fence from Pastor Joshua Clinton at Philippi Baptist Church. And we've also received generous financial donations from Edgefield residents. Many folks have stopped by when I've been out there working and clearing the foliage and have asked about the cemetery. Whose family is it? How long it's been there? Who am I? And they, they're definitely interested in this activity. We have received a grant and we are now respectfully requesting matching funds from this county council. The financial support that the Edgefield County Council provides will help restore and preserve this important part of our local history and serve as an example of what can be accomplished when a community comes together. And just I wanted you to be able to see the type of progress we've been making.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
As you can see here in the pictures, you can see how overgrown and hidden the cemetery was when I first discovered it in the middle of March. You can see the progress as more and more debris was removed and that old crushed fence was taken down. The last picture is what it looks like today. And we would love for everybody to come by and visit and see it. You can't miss it. It's right there on Bland Baptist at that intersection, Weaver and Bland Baptist. Thank you for hearing my request for matching funds. Are there any questions?
This obviously is not an active cemetery in any way, correct?
No, sir. Johnson Bland family, Johnson himself died in eighteen eighty-four. And he was one of the later ones. It's seventeen family members buried there, ten, well, only seven adults, ten children. It is beautiful brick coping. I've never seen a cemetery quite like this. And that's all it is, is brick coping around the graves and then the deceased are identified with a metal plate. We've just discovered that it was pewter that has the names of each deceased screwed into the plate, or into the, correct?
Looking at this picture, y'all did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Who provided the, the grant? And what was the dollar amount? Five hundred, okay.
In addition to that, sir, we've raised another five hundred from the community, so I, we've got a bucket of a thousand dollars. The most expensive item is those new two-by-two steel posts to put, to hold up our beautiful wrought iron fence that was donated. And those posts run about six hundred and fifty dollars.
We thank you for coming. We'd like to consider this, okay? Thank you for your patience, too.
Thank you for your time.
Pez, is there anyone else?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, we've got one additional individual that's signed up, Ms. Maria Moore. Ms. Moore, come on up, please.
My name is Maria Moore and this is my first time coming to the meeting. My husband and I own several pieces of property in Edgefield, probably close to thirty years, and so I just wanted to come because this is my first time coming to say that I'm not for the land management wardens and so I don't know if this is the right time to say it. I've never been here. This is my first time and I really don't know who my representative is, so.
You're in Rolling Hills?
Yes.
Which is off of Martin Town?
No, it's off of Highway twenty-five. Those are my neighbors. They live across the street. And I own two pieces of, one property on Jacob Mackey and then Rolling Hills kind of goes around. So I don't really know who my representative is.
Chair.
You are?
We'll look at the line.
Yeah, because you know, that's the one thing that I'm opposed to ordinances because I think that when you start going down that road, kind of rights will be taken away eventually, is my feeling.
You're, you're off of Jacob Mackey?
Um, no, I have a piece of property on Jacob Mackey, but as you go down Jacob Mackey, it turns into Rolling Hills.
Yeah.
And I don't, and you know, I really don't know who my representative is.
If I, if I turn on Jacob Mackey?
Yes.
And Jacob Mackey paved road, turn into a dirt road?
No, it's all paved now.
It's all paved now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
As you go down and you see the pond, the first one, it's, it's a circular. It's, you pass the pond and you turn and I live on that road.
It is beautiful down there.
Oh, I do, yes.
So I, I believe it's, I believe it's actually Ms. Ireland's, but we'll look at the map and one of us will-
I looked at my voting card, but-
Kind of crazy how it's divided up down there and how I get down there.
And we just, the people on the pond, yeah, there's ten properties on the pond and we just spent about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars doing our pond. We take care of our property there.
Well, let me ask you a quick question and if you have any other thing to add to your comment. Have you attended any of the small group meetings?
No, I haven't attended. I did send a message to, I think, Mr. Singletary.
Okay.
And so this is my first time, but I, yeah, I want to get invited and I think that we have to be careful. I was listening to the Williams family and I kind of wanted to cry because I don't have that kind of legacy and I can see why they're fighting for their little, their history, their legacy. And there's a lot of other families that have legacy. Edgefield's a very, very old town and I think that we have to fight for our rights and I think when you go down doing ordinances and things, it's kind of scary because of all these going on in the country, I think the only thing we have left is our right to vote here and, and our property. And I, I moved to Edgefield with my husband because I loved it. I lived in Aiken County. I've lived in Richmond County and I think Edgefield County is the most beautiful county of all the places I've ever lived. I've traveled my whole life. But when I listened to the Williams family talk about their history on that one road and that little fence they want to put, I thought about them fighting for their legacy. And so we have to fight for our legacy, even if we're transplants. That's what I want to say.
Well, we'll make sure you're invited to the small group meetings.
All righty, thank you.
And that was the last individual signed up for the public comments section, so there is no executive session tonight. I will ask the county administrator if he has a report he'd like to share with us.
Can you say anything important?
Whatever you want, sir.
Well, let me get some of the unimportant stuff out of the way first. I put on your desk a couple of maps that Mr. Stukesberry gave us today. The first one is this map here, if you could take a look at it. This map shows, if you look, all these little red squiggly things, that's their electric lines. So that, that shows within the entire county, all the areas that they will be putting broadband into. One of the things, if you look just outside of Trenton and up to Johnson, there's this kind of a blob sticking out here. That's your second map. That's this map here. The state legislature has said that you cannot extend broadband any more than two miles past your last line. So if we took this first map and went two miles from the end of their lines, you all of a sudden have this tan area here. That is an area that they will not, no matter what, be able to serve with broadband. Even if we said, we're going to help you pay for it, they wouldn't go into that area because of that. So it's an area that we have to be concerned about because they're not serving that area. Now Dominion maybe is going to be in there, maybe Comcast is already in that area. I know Dr. Kenyon lives in that area, so she might be able to tell us where Comcast is. But as we get further into this, this is one of the things that our two councilwomen will be helping to determine how do we get broadband throughout the entire area. Today, the chairman and vice chairman, myself, met with a couple of gentlemen that are in the broadband business and they might be able to help us with it. But we need to make sure that everybody is served, whether they're on Aiken Electric Co-op lines or not, that it's just a basic, just like electricity was something that was very basic in the thirties and forties. Broadband is the future for our county and our children. So those are the two maps. We'll be getting into it more a bit, but I just wanted to, and if you've got questions as you look at it, let me know. Second thing is you all got a letter from the library board. They would like to consider moving the library from downtown Edgefield to Buncombe Street. So if you just went right around the corner, there's the old pizzeria, before that was a theater, and that's where they'd like to have the library. It would cost about four hundred thousand dollars to purchase that property and then to get it outfitted. They were hoping that some of the American Recovery Funds that were passed by Congress, we're getting that five point three million dollars, could be used for that. I don't see how that can be used. So if we decide that we want to go forward, we would have to come up with funding to purchase the building and then at some time in the future, sell the old building that we have. I would like to, I, I mean, I don't have a problem having a conversation with the library board, but I know that you all have been very actively involved with them in the past and it would be great if council could appoint one or two people that either go with me or for them to go ahead and meet with the library board.
So I'm glad you brought that up. That was one of the things that I was going to mention is, does any one on council, up to two of us can attend that meeting with Ms. Bryan? Are you interested? I'm definitely interested in attending, but I don't have to.
We don't have to have two. One's fine.
It could be just one, but, but are any of you interested in meeting with the library board about this potential?
Okay.
I'll be happy to join you.
Okay, I'll let you know when we could get together.
Give you my schedule.
I would like to ask Mr. Roden, but is there's a reason, I mean, what was the reason for?
The, the major reason they would like to go to the other building is it's more spacious. There're less and less people are going to the library to take out books. More and more people are like myself, even at my age, I, I do eBooks most of the time. And I, in fact, it got to the point in Trenton that they closed their library because so few people were coming there. So they're putting on more and more programs for young adults and younger children and they need more space, not so much for the books as for the other learning experiences. Plus, there's parking space for thirty-one cars at that other location where at the library, there's space for four or five cars right in front of it. So it's, it's, there's some good reasoning. It's just, can we afford to do it? And can we afford to do it at this time? The sheriff has asked, requested something of me and I did not know the answer, believe it or not. He would like to, the Strom Thurmond High School has asked for a couple of old clunkers, as, as the sheriff put it. Basically, they have thirteen vehicles that they're getting ready to sell once they start their lease program. Couple of them are in very bad shape. They're, they could start up, but they, if you drive, you kind of are moving in the right or the left direction. And they would like to donate them to Strom Thurmond so that they, auto repair shop could have some cars that they could work on and get some skills. I don't know if council has ever donated vehicles like that to Strom Thurmond and if you'd want them to, would you want them to write a letter or just give me approval to allow them to have a couple, transfer the deed on a couple of vehicles?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
It's a great idea.
I think it's a great, yeah, we've, y'all done that before.
Yeah, it's a great idea, but I think we need some kind of letter indicating, you know.
I mean, you could, you could approve of the transfer title of two vehicles or I could bring you something and put it on the next agenda, asking for it. How would you like this to be approached?
My opinion is let's, let's have a letter from them with the vehicle or vehicles they want to donate and what the blue book value on them is.
Now, we're talking vehicles that are probably plus or minus a thousand dollars that you might be able to sell.
And, and, yeah, so that would be the direction that I would encourage. Is anyone opposed to that?
I'd like these put on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. That, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure I gave, things have changed and I just want to make sure we're doing things the way you want them done. The last thing is I, I wanted to have a celebration. And I always like to bring good news. In twenty eleven, we saw the number of accidents from workers' compensation going up tremendously. I asked at the time the council if we could go ahead and start a safety committee and try to do something about that. We were number thirty-one of all the counties in the state of South Carolina. They rate you on a modifier, so an average county would be a one as far as the number of accidents and what they have to pay. If you did very well, you might be a point eight or, or less. If you're not doing very well, you might be point two or higher. We're point, we're at one point two. So we are twenty percent higher than everybody else in the state, or the average in the state. The celebration is, we did get a safety committee, Leanne Anderson heads it up and they have been meeting faithfully since that time to work on ways that we could reduce our workers' compensation. And council has helped along that time. I remember in twenty twelve, in the budget, we put money in there for some stretchers for the EMS that had lifts on it, so they didn't have to bend down and pick up a, a large body and try to put it into the ambulance and somebody's back would go out. We had like three cases where we were paying for people that had back injuries. We don't have that very often anymore with EMS. We are now down to a point seven five. So we were dropped forty-five, point four five. Looking at the dollars, if we were, so we are going to be paying next year a hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars for workers' compensation. That's a lot of money. But if we were at one point two, we'd be paying three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. We are saving, based on what they did, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars by that. Just, we had in the budget, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, figuring this is what we're paying this year, so we're going to probably pay it next year, maybe even higher. That's a savings of fifty-one thousand dollars because of what they're doing with the safety committee. And it's not the safety committee, it's the hundred-plus employees that we have here in the county. What I'm asking council is some money that we could go ahead and use to reward them, to, to buy them a T-shirt, to buy them a cup, buy them a, a nice insulated thermal mug or something that could say, Edgefield County, Safety First, or however we want to do it, a shirt, something that would say to the employees, because they're the ones that did this, thank you for a job well done, for saving the county, but- But, I mean, it's not just saving the money because no one wants to go ahead and have their back messed up or hurt themselves in a serious manner. So I know this is coming out of the blue, but I just got this information a couple of days ago. I'd like council to authorize up to five thousand dollars for the safety committee to come up with some kind of reward, you know, probably cost twenty-five, thirty dollars for each of the employees that we could give them, to congratulate them and to way of saying thank you for what they've done.
This isn't a precedent, and we did this before. Did mugs before.
Yeah, we've done it, we did it when I was here in 2015, 2016.
Not mugs, the turbus cups.
So it's the old trick that I'm coming back again.
I could rerun, yes, but I'm just saying it's not something new.
Yeah, we haven't, we've done it before, but I'd like to do it again as a way of recogni, by the way, we're down to number eight in the state. We were thirty-one, we're down to, we made the top ten list, so can we do better? Yeah, we'd like to do better.
Congratulations, that's huge.
But, so I'd like to have your authority to go ahead and do something for them.
Okay.
Dr. Kenyon.
Mr. Roger, how did you come up with the figure of five thousand?
I didn't. It was just, I had a dartboard and it hit the spot that said five thousand on it. I just thought twenty-five, thirty dollars times the number of employees we have, that comes up close to five thousand dollars. There's no rhyme or reason.
All right, all right, I just want-
Let's be honest.
Do you remember what it cost before, when you did it? Do you remember their cost that-
I want to say it was like four or five thousand before, when we did it. I'm sure prices have gone up a little bit, but if you'd like to authorize more, that'd be fine, but I'd like to authorize something to be able to-
I still see those turbus-
Recognize them.
I still see those turbus mugs.
Yeah.
They're still being used.
Actually, I was hoping I'd get one myself before I left, so.
So I think it's a great idea.
It is.
I don't know if there's any other comments, or I would be happy to entertain a motion.
Can we do that?
It's great.
Can we do that?
Can we add it to the agenda? Can we add that? We can add that. Put it on the agenda for next month? Man, we can just, I would make a motion that we authorize the county administrator up to five thousand dollars to recognize our team, which has done an astounding job on safety and reducing our workmen's comp.
So we don't need to put it on the agenda?
I'm asking, that's a question, I will ask the administrator.
It's kind of like what we did last time when we had the sheriff and you asked me to go ahead and not authorize or go forward with it. If you all just feel comfortable with that, then I'll go ahead and do it.
Put it on the agenda.
I mean, we're saving fifty-one thousand dollars, so we have fifty-one thousand more in the budget next year as part of our workers' compensation. That's just going to be part of what we're going to be spending, that money. I just want you to know about it when you start seeing-
Let's put it on the agenda for July.
You want me to put it on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Let's say keep it.
Okay. We'll come up with something, probably by the time it gets to July, it might be six or seven thousand. You had your chance.
Sir, any other comments from you, sir?
No, I have nothing.
All right, well, we appreciate it. Before I give my comments, I just want to apologize to the public. I had three pages that were clipped together, and the second one was blank, so I assumed the third one was blank, but it wasn't. I had four other people that were signed up on page one. Is Ms. Eannie R. Williams still here?
No.
Okay. She, I think she spoke on the Williams Road issue. Ms. Mona Pazdowski, she's left. Ms. Shannon Brewer?
She's not there.
Okay, so she was on the Williams Road also. And then Ms. Rhonda Norwicky, you're on this sheet as well. Okay. Very good. Just wanted to make sure we didn't forget anybody. All right. I just have two quick, two really quick items. I had three, but we already talked about Ms. Bryan. Small group meetings have been going great. We still have to finish executing in your district-
Two more.
-and your district, and I'm going to have another couple. And because of that, we have not had a special call meeting to review our administrator resumes, and because we really wanted to focus on getting these small group meetings out of the way. I would like to make a suggestion that we meet on July fifteenth, which is the Tuesday after, I mean, it's two Tuesdays from tonight, to have a special call meeting to go over those resumes. Would that be work for you all?
At June or July?
I mean June. My apologies, June fifteenth, two weeks from tonight.
I have no problem.
Is there anyone opposed to that? Okay. And the only other thing is, I hope you all have a great evening. We appreciate everyone's participation. If you are watching online and you have not signed up to participate in the small group meetings, you have a very, very limited time to sign up, so we would encourage you to do that in the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Same.
Oh, my gosh, eight thirty-five.
Motion's been made by Ms. Ireland, seconded by Dr. Kenyon. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. We are adjourned. Thank you. Good to see you.